I thought we were sitting in this room.
Hopefully pray for us.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm so disappointed. I was like all excited to probably prove to be killing. Now I'm, now I can't. Now the fair is there.
Okay, it's 5:30 everybody.
Can't wait for Jeff.
All those that think the mayor's gonna be here? Do I need, I, I need one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see this truck. So, Chuck, do you know if the mayor's here today?
I believe that.
Alright, well, I'm gonna call to order the Skid City Urban Renewal Agency and ask for an acceptance of minutes from the October 17th meeting.
I wasn't here, so I can't do it.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Palman. He's seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor? Aye. And to our first order business is resolution 2016-19, transfer 115 Prospect Street to the city of Schenectady. Any questions?
So.
Moved by Mr. Multiviren. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And second item is resolution 20, well, 2016-00, transfer various properties to the city of Schenectady. They are listed there. Several on Stan Street, Emmett, Delmont, Craig Street. So, any questions or discussion on this?
So move.
Ask for a motion. I'm sorry. Moved by Mr. Multiviren. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other business to come before the Skid City Urban Renewal Agency? I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Mr. Multiviren. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All those in favor? Aye.
What are you guys, are they not working today?
They're taking the night off.
I know, but they blocked us the second weekend. You're in, you got your internet on? Are you on internet?
Yeah, but it took a little while for it to start.
I can't even get it. They're blocking me here. I thought I paid their fee.
Did you get the memo?
It's probably all the stuff that you've been looking at on your computer.
I thought I paid the charges.
Damn surface. It's a rush.
You're on Ms. Porterfield.
I ordered public service and utility. Mr. Lafon for the snow plowing contract?
Good evening.
Yep.
Everybody's mine.
Everybody's mine?
Oh yeah.
Okay. Ms. Lafon, I'm sorry, you have a floor.
I just want to request on the 2016, the snow plowing, the big, big, high, high speed. Well, it's not a big, we have a standard rate, like set rate we pay at 160 dollars or 20 even. They come in, we go into general plowing, they're stolen. Last year, we received two vendors that applied. In unfortunate condition, we only have one. We'll still be looking for a couple of them. The rate would never change. It's the city rate that we used last year. Fortunately, we didn't have a day last year, so it doesn't allow us to front orders with 10 foot four wheel blades on the street for two loads. And we'll continue to search. A lot of people get committed to different parking lots. There are contracts, they get paid a little bit more than that. Our contracts are a little different this year. We pay only if we call them in a region.
Oh, okay.
So, there's no upfront payment as in the past. You go into general plowing, we notify them. They come in, have their designated route. We call, call for set amount per hour, and that's it. This is one. This vendor did comply last year. We didn't use them. The second vendor complied this year because what I heard is now he's moving all the mobile cars. He's got a parking garage and all the parking lots, so he can commit to doing the business.
Okay. Ms. Brazzo?
I, I thought that I probably didn't have a vendor last year.
We did the first time we did. Because we did it, I guess, the morning I was in the, I was in the snow plowing last year. We signed up for snow plowing and snow renewal. The way the spec was written last year, they had a large volume of equipment. So many front motors, so many, again, dump trucks. So, they're very limited. We didn't get this one. We went back out and did this way. As an already rating, we were able to secure two vendors, commit four machines for us. So, we, we had previous contracts years before. It was a $50,000 upfront allowance. We didn't call them. We got $50,000. If we did call them, we worked off $50,000. So much per route, I think it was $2,500 to $2,495 per route. And if they went back and did the route again, it's another $2,500, which is not the most cost effective for the city. So, we went this way last year, the second time. We're going in again this year. Okay, we give them, recommend approval to enter into an agreement with this vendor. And again, we will try and find some additional vendors to make sure we have enough loaders in there.
Okay, so we would actually need additional people then? This wouldn't cover all the cities?
No. But the, the rate doesn't change because it's a set. You know, I'd like to see four machines at a memo. And we have two. It was just a foreign visitor today. Somebody who didn't lose a very large contract, they contacted me. We're not the low bidder when they opened this weekend. And we sent over the bid spec. We give the information in. We could put them on. Again, it's for the same exact rate. They just have to show they have the insurance. Some licensed drivers, license, so the employees can be in the machine and the machine work. So.
Yes, Ms. Brazzo?
And so regardless of the fact that we are no longer doing the $50,000 retainer, this is a competitive?
Yeah. I mean, we, we bid it just like we do. But in our bid specs, we have a rate that is, you know, we give them a route. Any one of our one of five routes, depending what we do, the vendor is located, we try to give them the closest route. So, they're on, you know, on the clock quick for us. The rates need the same. It's $160. But this year's a little differently. It was a little different. We're going to shifts this way. So, my staff and the logistics department will be going on shifts beginning in this month. It was first Monday of December. That's something we haven't done since I was in the area nineteen years ago. They are going on shifts. Have more people on the street. Two shifts into the, into the past event. It'll provide us, you know, more service with more people on the street. Not having everybody working from 6 to 2:30. Then at 2:30, I think everybody's in overtime. When you work 16 hours, you're done. You can't work that long. So, that's not necessarily the good thing. So, we have on the shifts. So, I think we'll be in good shape this winter.
Right. Ms. Multiviren?
Just a question. I notice $160 an hour, and you're not going with the $50,000. As far as we've done, do you have a not to exceed budget?
No. No. I mean, the $50,000 was a not to exceed. All you did was you gave them that $50,000.
What, it's a starting?
Right. And if, like last year, if we would have awarded that way?
You'd have lost.
They would have made $50,000 getting along once. We're only paying for what we use now.
So, a couple of things. First of all, Paul, can you email me a cleaner copy of the, the five districts here? Because I really can't see any of these streets.
Yeah, we, we do maps. It's hard to.
Maps on a kind of blurry street. I mean, it's very blurry. So, are these, these five zones, are these going to be strictly for this?
No.
We're gonna cover originally, though?
We, we have five zones in the city.
Right.
Typically, we do is we will, if we go into a general plowing, we have four to six inches or more. We will call that vendor in, and we'll put his two machines and two designated routes. We use our wing blades to do the primaries. Like State Street, Albany Street, Kings Road, Erie Boulevard. Those are primary routes. We use our wing blades. They're doing this down at the side streets. As I was gonna say, Bellevue, they're doing, they'll do Campbell. They'll do all the side streets. If you were to do Woodlawn, between Albany Street and McDonald Avenue, between State and Albany Street, or between State and Council. The main routes, we do our wing blades. We get them a lot quicker. So, they'll get, they'll get a designated route.
Okay. And then, who is the, the city plow chaser? Her own supervisor?
We use our superiors. We use our employees that are plow chasers. Typically, our foremen, you know, our supervisors that are out during a storm, and then they maintain that route. In other words, that loader guy's holding behind, you know, for some reason, or that loader breaks down, equipment breaks down, call one more guy in, start plowing that route too. He's got so much time to give him a machine on site for us. Plow chasers are our employees. City's gonna keep those.
Okay.
Typically, they're the CSA supervisors, the crew leaders, supervisors, farm head.
And we're gonna have GPS on all these plows this year, from what I understand? Is that correct?
Our plows have GPS. Correct. All the city plows are, they are GPS.
So, again, you're gonna have access to that where they're plowing and which streets they've been?
At any given time, we can look up and see where they are, where they've been. So, that is all being kept under, transferred in the, in the office we have set up now.
And then, to the $160 hour fee, that's minimum four hours, though, correct? That's four hours regardless if they only plow for the two?
Typically takes a route, I suppose, on about four to six inches. It'll take a, you know, if it's middle of the night and there's no traffic, it'll probably get done in four to five hours. You know, if they're fighting traffic, it's gonna take them six hours.
Four to five hours.
But if you look at that based on the cost of the last time, you do one route for $2,500. You can do that route three times over.
Three times over. Absolutely. Yep. Very good. All right.
Other question?
All of them.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anything else? Thank you, Mr. Lafon. Anything else to come before public service and utilities? Adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you.
All right. I'll call order public safety. And we have a couple of items here. The towing contracts.
In all the following streets, you gotta get the cars up.
That's exactly right. Move them.
Tom, I think you have for you, the responses to the 3D RFP that we put out, regarding towing contract on the street, free, free, to fight back at H&amp;K. Interstate, thank you. And AC. We're recommending right now Interstate and H&amp;K. What we did, Sergeant Harigan here from our traffic division, as well as our undercover officer, Assistant Chief Powell.
Really?
Thanks you guys. I know some news.
He's working. Look at him, huh? Wow. Me under the covers.
What we did, we actually, we actually went on to the site review for each of these vendors that, that put in the application to see if they're in compliance and so forth. We felt two were and one was not. We've dealt with these two agencies also for, since, he's our, he's our historian there, Chief Powell. Ever since he's been there, we've had satisfactory results. We've dealt with two vendors as well. The third vendor, we felt they were not compliant with some of the, some of the things within the RFP, fencing on the yard, store front, some other things. So, we're here to answer any questions. I'm not sure exactly what you have, what you don't have, other than, you know, again, we went through the letter of the RFP to make sure that all the vendors stood up for it and.
Any questions, Ms. Brazzo?
I'll defer to Ms. Porterfield for now.
Yeah, yes. I'm looking at the RFP, and it's, in particular, the one for A and AC. It looks like there needs to be some follow-up. Somehow, our Corporation Council got involved in this particular bid. Could you just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, we've worked in and in Corporation Council over time to obviously draft the RFP, and then, and the responses of it. We picked around some different ideas. There's a little bit of a delay in accepting all these, you know, any of these, because we met the Corporation Council. But with the one particular vendor, I don't know if there's really issues other than what we identified as a site review. We went out to, you know, do the site, make sure that people could retrieve the big things, where, you know, store fronts retrieve their, their vehicles. No leases with certain properties that they claimed they could store places on, or cars on, that were, you know, people were told more rural agreements, when the other vendors had adequate parking, storage for cars. If there's something specific written down there, I'm gonna fill it in. There's a little notes on there. Sorry if I sent you a copy with notes on it.
No, there's just a lot of letters from, from people, like substantiating your ability to do the job. And I've just not often seen that. So, I was just trying.
It's not so much that they had the towing capacity, we could, I mean, certainly, no, they could have, they had the towing vehicles, the tow trucks. But it was, it was more of the storage capacities, it was more of the, the, the elderly people retrieve their vehicles and so forth.
Okay.
And we, my head, I was actually reading the RFP, what contract language in there. In the contract language, it said the 35.
Okay.
And again, the parameters were two more than $40 a month and so forth. Another thing, a provision in here, which is big, is we've had some liability for crushing cars without sufficient. Now, we put it in the RFP, but they can't crush one unless they notify us. We have to sign off on it. So, it doesn't happen. Because we've had some cars crushed it. Should not have happened.
You don't want that story?
Yep.
Really?
Sorry, we crushed your crown.
Maybe we can straighten that out.
Oh my gosh.
A little more bondo.
Alrighty. Any other questions or concerns regarding the contract? Are we okay to move this? I need a motion. Oh, Mr. Riggi?
I just have one question. It's a little ambiguous. Who is the owner of AC's towing? Because on the RFP, it says Karen Caprera. So, is it Rafael or is it Karen? Who owns the business?
I don't know the answer to that.
He portrayed himself to be, to be the owner of the business.
Oh. It's interesting. That's all just, not for nothing, but.
Thank you, sir. Alright, very good. Alright, I need, are we okay to motion to move this?
I'll move it.
Mr. Razza, Mr. Multiviren, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Have a safe evening. No, he's gonna go back under covers.
I'm gonna go back under covers.
Under the covers, at the blankets.
Does he need a driver?
Alright, let's move on here. Mr. Multiviren, you have a ceremonial resolution here to talk about?
Yes. Straightforward ceremonial resolution for Michelle, Bertrand, and Paul Bertrand for the community service.
I'd be happy to move that.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else to come before public safety?
Adjourn.
Ms. Brazzo, Mr. Multiviren, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Okay, I will call to order the Finance Committee. And we have a ceremonial resolution for alveon awareness. Alveon is actually a lung disease that was discovered in the eighties, which renders lung tissue inactive. And they're looking to make some, yeah, it's not good. It's, they're looking to make some heightened awareness. There's a lot of support groups and, and meetings coming together. So, it's just a, a way to create a little awareness. We had a regional meeting here on Saturday. Most of it's kind in the area. So, just again, helping them spread the word.
I'll move it.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And any other business to come before the Finance Committee this evening?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, I will call to order Government Operations. We have the security breach and notification policy. Mr. Falatigo.
It's my understanding this should probably be table for two weeks because we don't have a draft. Was it already sent around? I don't know. I don't believe that it was.
Just the legislative request.
We had a breach.
Is it possible to be moved for two weeks?
Do we have any time constraints on it? I know it's something that we need to have in place, but it's not time sensitive.
I don't believe it's time sensitive, in the sense that two weeks will make a difference.
Okay.
I talked with Seena about it a little bit. She said that she had sent a draft, but she wasn't comfortable disseminating it before the next council meeting. So.
Okay. Is Mr. Falatigo aware also?
I'll make him aware. I haven't seen him. This is just the game news to me, like, I have. So, I will make him aware tomorrow, here tonight.
Okay.
If anything changes, I'll let you know. But I don't believe that it.
Well, this is our, well, we can add it on Monday, please.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't have any, I asked her if she has anything that I could, you know, at least send around. She didn't. So, I don't wanna.
Sounds good. We'll put that on again for another two weeks. And any other business to come before Government Operations?
I'll adjourn.
Okay.
I'll slide it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I'll order.
Move it.
Government Ops.
You're plumping.
Oops, sorry.
You're jacking me. Why did you touch me?
Because I thought you were on it, sir. And I knew it was an out, but I.
What? It's Porterfield? And John and me.
Yeah.
Yes.
You've been taken off.
I'm like, I'm looking right at it.
Come on, we're all. I'll order administrative efficiency. The only item for discussion is ceremonial resolution recognizing small business Saturday for our small businesses in the city.
I'll move it.
Second. All those in favor? Any other business?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Beautifully done. Beautifully done. Alright, I'll call to order the Committee on City Development Planning. And is somebody here to talk about the, the budget?
No, I just called.
Just to call for a public hearing.
Oh, we just called for a public hearing. That's it?
They'll be here in two weeks.
Okay. Alright, so I guess we'll just call for the public hearing. Somebody wanna move that? Mr. Multiviren? And Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright. And the Upper Union Street bid, 2017 budget, calling for a public hearing, same, same as well. Motion.
Second.
Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we have board appointments here for the, the council. Who's gonna speak on that? Here's the letter, Crystal. Or anybody, Rachel. I don't know anything about this.
Ms. Coe?
Yes, Ms. Brazzo?
There's a letter from Mr. McCarthy, excuse me, Mayor McCarthy, to me regarding the appointments to the Knighkerk Council. There will be four individuals that he's recommending to be appointed to council. Mr. Alden Doolittle, Ms. Laurlee, Ms. Shirley, Matlin, and Ms. Jenny Overeander. And then, reappointing Ms. Colangelo, Ms. Arreno, Mr. Tramarco, Mr. Ackerman, Mr. Rockbank, Ms. Roy, and Mr. Legas. So, those are the mayor's recommendations that he has put forth.
And how are these appointments for? Do we know anything like that? That was one of the questions I was gonna ask him. Do we know the duration of this appointment?
I do not.
We do not know that.
Does Burke know by chance?
I'm not certain. I believe this board are three-year appointments. But that's just off. If you could just send an email or just clarify that, just shoot an email if you can, if you wouldn't mind. Or maybe even include that in the resolution, correct? Wouldn't that make sense?
As well, we don't.
Right. Include that in there. Term expires. Alright, term expiration. Check that down before I forget. Alright, any questions or concerns? Anybody?
Hi, move this?
Hi, Mr. Multiviren.
How does someone get to get their names always to the board?
I would say they should contact the mayor.
Okay. My question, other than that, I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. I have number four, final review, the ceremonial naming of streets. Mr. Brazzo?
Okay, we had public hearing. I, I, I want to first to speak or no? It was, of course, please tell me. But nothing was mentioned as to realigning anything. So, at this point, I will proceed as is. I know that Mr. Kojer, I believe you had something you wanted to add to it. So, I'll let you speak for yourself instead of speaking for you.
Yeah, and I spoke earlier, and I, I do understand that there's a group, the Human Rights Commission, I believe it is, that's looking to name a, a section Martin Luther King Way, or whatever they're looking to name it. But from what I understand, originally we're talking Craig Street area. But now, I saw Ms. Angelica Morris the other day, and they were considering moving it to Albany Street to include the Joseph Allen Apartments all the way down to Dieter, which is certainly more than the two-block radius that we're talking about. So, how do we express consideration for something special like that? And can we include some wording in here, Ms. Brazzo, or, or council members, except for something with extreme circumstances that can, you know, the council would, would consider? Extreme circumstances or certain circumstances? Or how do we feel? Because again, that, Albany Street's a very big area. And if they're going, I drove by it again several times, and, but what's the next one past Hewlett there at the next, where next block?
Which direction?
Going towards, no, it'd be going towards downtown. So, it'd be west.
Schenectady.
Yeah, it'd be west. Schenectady Street. So, that's all you'd have is that little short area.
That's it, no. If you started, where do they want to start it, Craig?
No, no. It'd be Hewlett. They want, they wanna end at the Joseph Allen Apartments.
Page.
The page. So, that would be a very short little two-block area, just the name of the Martin Luther King Way. Just a concern. I mean, you know what? I mean, I'm certainly fine with the two blocks. If, and I talked to Ms. Brazzo regarding the 500 signatures. But again, that's regarding the neighborhood. Seventy-five percent must be from the neighborhood. So, again, I'm just looking at this configuration. So, we would consider all of Hamilton Hill that neighborhood for, to obtain the 500 signatures?
And what we discussed was the way that they are currently delineating in terms of the, the boundaries that exist, that that's what we'll use for every neighborhood, not just Hamilton Hill.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, right. So, that'd be like, what, the 2020, or the 2020 report, maybe using that layout? That would make sense, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because it's, it's like all the way up to Brandywine.
Yeah, because they have the map there, too.
South Side State Street, out to 890. So, yeah.
So, you wouldn't undo any special consideration by the, for an extreme circumstance or any circumstance? I don't know. I'm.
I'm not sure what extreme means.
Well, I, I just think that two-block radius is too short for somebody of Dr. Martin Luther King's status. Being very honest with you, I just think that's too short of a designated area for this individual. Now, would it happen when we call it the Ed Kojer Way? No, you're probably gonna have shorter than a block.
Just the house on, just the house on, man.
Right. I wouldn't even get the signatures, right? Who the hell would get the signatures?
Mary May will be one house.
One house.
Anyway, I don't, there was, again, just discussion. I mean, look, and I'm certainly fine with this. But I just think this is a, a very different circumstance here, where we really want to recognize an, an individual of national status as opposed to local status. I just thought it would be very appropriate for us to extend that, whatever that the Human Rights Commission was actually looking for, to come to the council with, with their application. I mean, who knows? Maybe they're only gonna ask for two blocks. But I know, I know Angelica Morris spoke to me, again, two weeks ago, saying she was trying to go from Dieter all the way up to include the Joseph Allen Apartments. And I just thought that would be very, very nice recognition. And look, and I'm fine with it as it is. But.
I get what you're saying about the national prominence. I'm like, I'm still like, kinda up in the air about it. The other thing that I think that anytime anybody wants to, any part of any neighborhood, they should really be also discussing it with the Neighborhood Association as well, in, in terms of what, you know, areas they may think that may, maybe give some level of input.
Hmm. Fine.
Mr. Kojer?
Yeah. Go ahead. Question, I'm sorry.
I, I recognize exactly what you're saying. And I don't disagree with the, you know, issue that you're raising. However, I feel like when we embarked on this, we did so because we wanted to be left out of making those sorts of decisions, right? Give it some structure and say, okay, here's the city's plan. So, I think, and I think we all came to consensus on what that was going to look like. And that's what we put forward in our public hearing. And that's, you know, what we all agreed on. So, I think to start right out of the gate with making exceptions to that is a little bit challenging, you know? Not that, not that anyone isn't worthy, not that someone else, you know, who has, you know, national recognition, who really changed the face of our country, wouldn't deserve the same recognition. But I just think then we're thrust back into the arena of deciding who is that important and who's not that important, rather than just keeping it consistent. And so, although it's difficult to say, we really should play by the rules that we've just established, you know, I wouldn't be disagreeable if the consensus around the table was to make exceptions. But I also feel like we worked hard to establish what we have. So.
I'm fine with it. Again, I just thought we could do special consideration, or something, some clause in there that would give future, not just this council, but future councils, that way out if they really saw something significant.
They can just change it.
They change everything. Exactly.
And it would, it would have been a good thought when we were drafting the legislation if we thought that somewhat of national prominence, but.
Yeah. Again, she just told me that just a couple of weeks ago, after we had the public hearing, too. I'm fine. Now, look, and this is good stuff. We got something in place. Go ahead.
My question on this is followed by the last discussion. I mean, I, this paragraph here, where it says a portion, the name, and terminate in less than two blocks. So, we are talking about here one block.
Two blocks or less, I believe.
No, no, it says the same description as of the last presentation.
I should say two blocks.
So, this needs to be changed. Because if, as it reads right now, it's telling us that it should be one block.
Yeah, it should be two blocks or one.
Yes. So, can we make notation of this and have this changed, please?
Well, terminate in less than two blocks. Well, terminate in less than two blocks.
Two blocks, so that will be, we're talking about here, one block.
You're right.
I always write.
Two blocks or less.
Listen down, I'll be over there. All right, all right, so going to reword that a little bit? Or Ms. Brown, are you okay?
That notation was made last, maybe it shouldn't change.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And it may have been changed, and this is the old, my old draft, too, but we'll make sure that that, I mean, you know, I don't, I may be incorrect, but I don't think we would have to have a public hearing if we wanted to get three blocks or less for, you know, forever and ever, but...
Four blocks.
You know.
I don't care, guys.
Just throwing it out, no doubt there for base consideration, I...
Fine, at least, again, at least we have something in place, or something in place, something to start with, and if somebody wants to change it after we're gone, and...
That's exactly what I was going to touch on, we have something to start on here, so let's move forward with this, and then eventually, if it doesn't work, then we can always revisit it and...
Very good.
Make adjustments.
All righty, are you okay with that, everybody okay? Jan, you're good?
I'm good.
Mr. Regge, you okay with that?
I'll move it.
So moving, Mr. Moltiver, Ms. Porville, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and item number five here is a transfer of 115 Prospect Street to the Capital Region Land Bank, Ms. Jackie.
This is just another property in the eastern avenue corridor that's been identified that the lady is in trouble, but the plan right now is to evaluate it probably for renovation project, but could end up being...
I'll move it, Mr. Moltiver, Ms. Porville, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then a demolition and debris removal of the vacant properties, which we had just earlier today.
Uh, yes, so we had a bid opening on October 28th, two bids were submitted, the bid we're putting forward, the local public bidder was Jackson Foundation, the bid is for a batch of properties on Schenectady Street, in and around Craig Street, and then two on Broadway Hill, and one on Kerry Street. The bid that Jackson submitted was for $223,000, $223,500, crap, I'll try it again, $23,500, it's been a long day. The next, the only other bidder was, this girl had substantially higher amount.
Okay. Yep. Any questions, concerns? Good question.
Yeah, just, well, it was really basically on the bid, so when we bid these out, whoever the bidder, person has to bid the entire contract, it's not like somebody does demolition, and then someone else can do hauling away, is it always just bid one flat?
One, one package bid?
Yeah, not for this, but just maybe in the future, we, if we're putting out our RFP, we can consider maybe, if, in places where it has the ability to be broken down, and this looks like it does, we would have the opportunity for smaller businesses to be doing some of it, like, there's a lot of hauling, people that haul, that have trucks to haul, that can haul away the debris, as opposed to it being just, you know, all part of the demolition company, then give some of our smaller contractors who don't have the ability to do the demolition, because they don't have a big ball, to get part of the contract. I know that one of our people who are doing the job up on the community builders, they, I saw that they did that with their contract, they broke it down, so a lot of smaller businesses have an opportunity to do that, so I think that may be something we could try to consider in the future, if there's one of that opportunity.
Interesting.
Yep, go ahead, Jan.
I don't know if you have, but do you have a timeframe as to when these are going to be demolished?
Not really, we have to engage with the contractor post the vote next week as to mobilization.
Okay.
I would think probably around the holidays is a reasonable estimate.
Maybe forty years, though?
I'm hopeful, they, we'll start some, but I'm not sure about, about finishing.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all unsafe properties, so they should go pretty quickly.
That's the reason why I asked the question, because these are all unsafe, for the need to go as fast as they can.
The Broadway ones in particular are a little challenging, we built in that they have to do, they have to provide a source of water, because of the water situation with being such a busy corridor there, they have to actually like rent something so that they can like slow traffic down and stuff, so it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit of a morbid one day, or days, getting that day is going to be, but it's going to be my Christmas gift to see that $14.96 come down, that's terrible, it's terrible.
Frank, thanks, I agree 100%.
I'll move this.